This is our regular meeting, Monday, September 11th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. I'm gonna do another roll call. Mr. Burst.
President.
Mr. Pope.
President.
Mr. Lucas.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Cheers to you. All right. We're gonna use this one you got here.
Yes, sir, the one I laid on top there.
Okay. Oh, God, okay. We're gonna pass the, we did pledge allegiance and all that. So approve the agenda. I hear motion to approve the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Chair vote is aye, okay. Now, we got our guest speaker items, not on the agenda, but proclamation for the National Voters Registration Day. We're gonna...
I'm gonna have, if you don't mind, have the county attorney to read the proclamation.
Okay.
Proclamation, National Voter Registration Day. Whereas the right to vote is a fundamental cornerstone of our democracy, empowering citizens to have their voices heard and participate in the governance of our great nation; and whereas the right to vote is sacred and empowers individuals to shape the direction of our community, state, and nation; and whereas National Voter Registration Day is a nonpartisan national effort to ensure that every eligible citizen has the opportunity to register to vote and to make their mark on the future of our country; and whereas Ware County, Georgia recognizes the importance of fostering an engaged and informed electorate with resources and access to participate in the electoral process with the understanding that active participation in this democratic process is vital for the well-being and progress of our community; and whereas voter registration is the first step toward exercising this essential right of every American, and by encouraging voter registration, we are promoting civic responsibility, inclusivity, and equal representation for all residents of Ware County; and whereas September 19th, 2023, marks National Voter Registration Day, a day dedicated to raising awareness about voter registration opportunities and ensuring that every eligible citizen has the chance to register to vote in upcoming elections; and whereas Ware County, Georgia seeks to uphold the principles of fairness, transparency, and accessibility in its electoral processes and recognizes that the strength of our democracy depends on active participation of our citizens; whereas by proclaiming September 19th, 2023, as National Voter Registration Day in Ware County, we reaffirm our commitment to fostering a robust democracy and encourage all eligible residents to register to vote and make their voices heard throughout the nation. Now, therefore, the Ware County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 19th, 2023, as National Voter Registration Day in Ware County, Georgia. We urge all eligible citizens to seize this opportunity, register to vote, and engage in the democratic process. Let us work together to strengthen our democracy and ensure that the values of freedom, equality, and civic participation continue to flourish in our great county, state, and nation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. We need to vote on that, to accept it. How do we?
You can officially, if you'd like, yes, sir.
Huh?
You can, you can vote on it as a official...
Do we vote on it to approve it by the commission?
Chairman, I move that we vote to approve the National Voter Registration Day, September 19th.
I got a motion, you got a second.
I'll second it.
You have a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Chair vote is aye. All right. Now, we got our... Let's see, we have a... Employee of the Month. Melissa Bennett. Teresa gonna come up and lead our... Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hey, Teresa.
So the Ware County Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Melissa Bennett as Employee of the Month for September 2023. Melissa previously worked for Ware County from June 2002 to December 2004 as an administrative assistant for the Public Defender's Office. She then returned in March 2017 as our payroll administrator where she still currently serves. Melissa was nominated for this award by her supervisor because she very consistently goes above and beyond to make sure that payroll gets processed timely for employees. One most recent example is all the effort she made to get payroll completed during the week Hurricane Idalia came through. Our building was closed, but Melissa came into work that Friday to make sure time cards were created for employees to use that following Monday. Most employees, including Melissa, were without power for days after the storm hit that week, but she still managed to make that task a priority. Also, due to the Labor Day holiday that following Monday, she had one less day to process payroll, which is a hugely daunting task during a regular five-day week. She faced several challenges with how workers were paid for working during the storm as opposed to those who didn't, and still managed to find a way to track data for storm cleanup costs from payroll just in case we are eligible for assistance or reimbursement. But even with all the extra work involved with that particular payroll, she still met the challenge by working until 9:00 p.m. that Wednesday night to make sure payroll would be timely on Friday. And I'm sure we are all very appreciative of that effort. Her initiative and willingness to help are greatly appreciated, and we want her to be recognized for the great job she does for us. So if you all would please help me congratulate Ms. Melissa Bennett.
Can we come up to the slide because it's easier for pictures?
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'd also like it to be known that Melissa is a former student of mine. Okay.
Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations, Melissa. Okay. We consent, I approve a meeting minute for August of 2023, a work session, a public hearing, and a regular meeting. I hear a motion that we approve a minute.
Chairman, I move approval for the minutes of August 2023, August 14th, as presented.
Okay.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I got a motion and a second. Okay. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Chair vote is aye, all right. Let's go to the agenda items now. Memorandum of Understanding With the City of Warecross Midnight Basketball League. Okay. We know what that's about. And is anybody from the city here?
Don't think so, no, sir. But I was gonna mention too that we made the two revisions that was mentioned about the law enforcement officers being on premises.
You changed that.
Yes, sir, in paragraph four, and then also under paragraph six termination, to clarify that better from the standpoint of if there's problems, it's immediately terminated.
Okay. All right. Is that okay with you? Steve, I think you brought that up.
It is, something else also on number five on the housekeeping parking lot. They don't address the parking lot.
Okay.
Is that something that they're gonna have to do too?
Uh, we probably need to put it in there. I'm not sure how many participants, but I would imagine there's... I know when they had it at City Auditorium years ago, there was quite a few folks there. But that might be something we can add. I can add that in there too.
Steve, if you just wanna make the motion and then just say to add that, would we make that?
Yes, I'll make the motion on the housekeeping part, that the parking lot be included in the cleanup responsibilities for the city around the area of the gym, not the whole...
Yes.
Right, immediate area.
That's a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with regard to midnight basketball with that status change.
Okay. All right, you got a second on it?
I'll second it.
You got a motion and a second. All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Chair vote is aye, okay. Now, we're gonna go on the base resolution of 2023-27, approve the MOU with the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association. Now... We have a motion on that.
So move, Mr. Chair.
You got a motion, you got a second.
Second.
You got a second.
Under discussion, could Mr. Boy explain? Give a little background of what this is?
Yes, sir, it is a grant that we received called the Boost Grant. It is a program that's sponsored by the Georgia Recreation Parks Association for expanded educational opportunities for kids after hours, more advanced things, more field trips and those kind of things to expand their learning beyond just being in school. So it's more of a, it provides really total all-day educational programs.
So it expands and adds to the program that's already in place at its time?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion on it? Okay. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Chair vote is aye, okay. Now, this is the purchase request for mower equipment. Uh, and that's a mower Max. I don't know, Mower Max boom, I reckon, dash. Generation three. Anyway, it's that machine that we talked about. We need, we talked about getting two of them. So, I hear a motion that we purchased two of them. Michael came back. He said he called about that. I'm assuming he hadn't heard yet. But I think if we do purchase two of them, it may be a reduced, a little bit reduced. We've...
Okay, so do we think we need to...
Need to get two of them.
Yeah, before we commit to two, we need to find out maybe what the cost of... We're gonna go with the price?
Go with what we got. With the price we got, and...
Come back any cheaper?
Yeah, two of them, we may get a discount.
Right, well, that's what I'm hoping we will.
But we don't know yet that we can approve them.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making basically we buy two of these Gen 3 mower Max booms. That's a price of $270,000 each.
Okay, second. You got a second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it?
Scott, you did save in the discretionary fund from the T-Spot.
From the regional T-Spot, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that was a fund that we've been collecting ever since '18 that we haven't really used it all.
I think it'd be well spent for something like this because we keep saying about we wanna be a progressive county, wanna do things to try to alleviate some of these problems. So now's the time to step up to the plate and do it.
Yeah.
I appreciate Michael, you know, bringing this to us and then the chairman, you know, saying hey, instead of one, just gonna get two and we gonna take care of it.
I'd emphasize also, if we buy these two machines, I want two dedicated employees running them, not swapping them back into road raiders, dump truck drivers. These two people will run these machines many hours they can a week.
Yeah.
And Michael, he's assured us that he can, he can rise to the task on that.
Okay. All righty, we got a motion and a second. And vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Chair vote is aye, okay. Road closing and abandonment request on Two N Road. We've heard the... We didn't have any oppositions on it, so I have, I hear a motion to close that road.
I'll make a motion. I move that we close the road as described by Chief Hubert.
Okay.
Which is that Two N Road, some 400 something feet.
I hear a second.
Second.
You got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it?
Mr., Chairman, is that person requesting this? Is that the Roger Speaker who used to be chairman?
Yeah, it'd be him.
Okay, I thought that was him.
In case he's smiling.
Yeah.
He's smiling now.
Yeah. Just said that kinda in jest.
Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Chair vote is aye, okay. Now, haircan debris collection and disposal. Crowder Gulf noticed to proceed.
Yes, sir. What we're looking for is a vote to go ahead and issue that notice procedure so they can gear up. And the one below that, and I'll go ahead and mention both of them while we're talking. The other one is the Thompson Monitoring Services. It's, what I'm asking for is more of a emergency purchase of services for that company to do the monitoring for the debris collection and disposal. We have a representative with us, Keith Forster with Thompson, the company that would do the monitoring. They're here, but when we get to that item, if you want him to speak, he's here now.
Okay, all right. We just need to go ahead and vote on the haircan debris collection.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, then we get to the next one.
Okay. To give them notice to proceed. Okay, I hear a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Yeah, you got a motion and a second.
Under discussion, Scott. We approved a contract with Crowder Gulf a few months ago.
Yeah.
And they're on standby when we need them.
That is correct, yes, sir.
This started, correct?
Yes, sir, we do it annually. The contract's written where we can extend it annually, and that's what the commission did, I think, back in February, March.
Yeah, first of spring. Thank you.
Hunter, do we have to pay any of that, Scott? Or is it?
FEMA reimburses us.
Reimburses?
Excuse me, for those services, yes, sir.
All of it? If we declared under the...
Uh-huh.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Chair vote is aye. Okay, we need a, we need the Thompson Monitoring Service emergency purchase of services. And we need it. Vote on that one.
And I didn't, yes, sir, that, we wouldn't, I would really, just for the standpoint of having it in the record in the minutes of that being approved, and I didn't know if you'd want the representative to speak to it.
Yeah, would he come up and tell us?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, okay.
How's it going? Keith Forster with Thompson Consulting Services. Anytime that you have to activate a debris contractor after a storm because it's out of the, beyond your capacity to clean up the debris, it's required that you have a third-party monitoring service to monitor the debris and document the debris removal for FEMA reimbursement purposes.
Does that make sure that hazardous stuff's put there or anything picked up? That no runoffs or anything like that?
Yes, sir.
Would be left on the land?
It's anything that's, that's on, sitting on the right-of-way that has to be removed, that's considered hazardous, the public maintained right-of-way?
Yeah. I know a lot of people dump anything out, you know, you have to watch that, and I understand that.
Yep, you know, and we could... It can be, it could be, it's just gotta be storm debris only is what would be picked up and removed and disposed of. But Crowder Gulf would pick up.
Okay.
So if a fellow lost part of his house, a tree fell across, and they're tearing it down, so does Crowder pick that up too?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, if it's, if it's suggested by the, if it's suggested by the county that it gets picked up, it would be a reimbursable item.
You're talking about the tree, right?
We had a couple of houses that got, got into a storm tree.
So you're saying the house, the house, except the material from the house, or just the tree?
Yeah, definitely. Say if the house fell across the bedroom, if I had to tear the bedroom off the house, it'd take care of it too.
Yeah.
Well, I thought it was just, you know, the trees and stuff. Trees and stuff.
Yeah, so it would be construction and demolition debris.
Yeah.
As long as it's out on the right-of-way, it can be picked up. FEMA allows, there are programs that you can make a special request called private property debris removal. But this is mostly right-of-way work.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, because of the emergency, you know, conditions of this, that's one thing that the county manager is asking for is a request to kinda go outside the normal purchasing policy. So you all will be approving that because of the federal declaration of the emergency. And then also, we don't currently have a contract in place with this group, so we'll ask that Mr. Forster provide us with their standard contract. And if you all will just give the county manager and I approval, then we can, you know, make sure that that looks good and get it, get it executed by the chairman.
Okay. Okay, that needs to be added to this.
This is just bypass the bidding process, correct?
Well, it's just because of the federal emergency, and we wanna go ahead and get this done, you know, for our citizens and not have to make them wait as part of the normal kind of procedure and process.
Lanes County bitted this out, I think, a little over a year ago or so, and Thompson is who they chose. And so we're, in a sense, piggybacking off of their bid for that service.
And this is also something that FEMA will reimburse the county?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So y'all bill the county, then the county will pay y'all, then FEMA will pay the county back?
That's correct, yep.
Yeah. All right, I hear a motion.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't know how you need to make that motion.
I make a motion that we set the Thompson Monitoring Service emergency purchase of services.
And give them the right, the, I mean, give manager...
Let the county manager and the county attorney handle the legal part of it.
Legal, okay.
Second.
You got a motion and a second. Okay. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Martin. And chair vote is aye, okay. All right, now county manager report.
Um, I don't have anything to add. The only thing I really wanted to mention is I just wanted everybody to think about what today's date is. You know, 22 years ago. And I know all of us probably remember what it was when we got the news or saw it or whatever. I was in the city attorney's office in Fernane Beach talking about two ordinances. And it just sticks in my head. I knew what clothes I was still, I wore on that day and things like that. But, and I also got the, I say the honor to meet, I used to work with a gentleman part-time, that his son was actually in the South Tower. And I think if I remember correctly, he was on the 76th or 77th floor about 15 minutes before the South, the South Tower's first one to drop. And, but it was the second one to get hit. And he actually let me listen to his voicemail that his son was standing at the window at the time that the plane hit. And he had three or four voicemails on his phone, and he let me hear it, and it's just something you'll never forget. And no one good and well, but he didn't make, they couldn't find him. I don't know that they were able to identify him after it failed, but I do know that. And the only reason they know that he didn't make it out is his brother went back to the site two days later and knew where he parked his vehicle. And when he got there, he saw where he was, that his vehicles was the only vehicle in that parking lot still sitting there. So that's how he knew he didn't make it. But they couldn't find him. And so I just, I wanted to say that because it brings home the fact of how real that really was.
Realization of that.
What it really means, so.
Okay. Thank you for that, Scott.
Thank you.
And y'all remember the people in Paraco? They just had bad earthquake. Several thousand people lost their lives. You think about them. We think about them. Okay. Commissioners gonna make, y'all get in.
Uh, if I could get Mr. Brandon, give us an update on the Little John's territory, Little Drone Expedition or whatever we call it.
I communicated his desire for the commission, uh, to the property owner, and I got Scott about that, I don't know if he was able to send out, indicate that to the, uh, commission or not.
I don't remember if I did or not.
But basically, he rejected our counter offer.
He rejected it?
Yes, sir. He asked me, which is kind of ironic, we've been talking about this all afternoon, if there was a possibility that we could lower that hedge down to about three feet, he asked, off of his property. And so, if we were able to get those machines that y'all have been talking about, and they had that molten head, Mr. Chairman, you could go in there and, and bring that thing right down to that three-foot height he requested, and that might be a compromise that he is willing to, um, uh, go with that would also, uh, be low enough that you would be able to see across that radius in a vehicle and really, um, siphon up that intersection there, that, that curve, that sharp curve in that roadway. And so, I thought I'd mention that as well. He's, um, I guess you say we still kinda in a negotiation process, Commissioner.
Would we have to go on his property to do that?
Yes, sir, that's all.
I'm trying to think about it.
You just have to get a construction easement from him and tell him what we were wanting to do and ask for his permission to be on his property to do that. If he was willing to sign that, and it's on the record and everybody knew about it, um, then that would be up to the commission to approve that, and that's how we would have to address it. He's still, um, concerned about the transfer of that property into the county. I don't think he understands that it's just a right-of-way, we're not gonna be able to block his, his access to the roadway. He was concerned about, uh, developing the property in the future, and I tried to explain to him that it wouldn't be any different than any other right-of-way on any other county road. You can split that property however you want to, and you're still gonna have access, and he just applied for a driveway permanent in the future, and we would put a driveway in for him if he wanted to, you know, break that up into lots and subdivide it for development. It wouldn't be a problem, it wouldn't affect it at all.
I think that'll work. Be a win-win if we can do that, like I say, cut it down and, uh, don't have to worry about trying to acquire, you know, right-of-way from him, you know, just do it that way.
If he permitted.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you said he asked for it, right?
He asked if that was an option. And, uh, I know we would rather clear it and have something that you, you know, replant some grass or something that you could mow and maintain, and it wouldn't, you know, be something that would be, um, but that would probably, that's not our most.
Desirable.
Desirable alternative, but that might be a compromise that would benefit all.
I mean, if we went out there and cut that set down and say three-foot high, we don't have to worry about every year or whatever, cutting it again.
That's why I said it would be better if we could clear it.
If you're sitting in a car, go around that curve, three-foot hedge right there, you know, it's not gonna be much good.
Right.
Not gonna sit around.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying it's not our most desirable option, but it would be, um.
It'd be, it'd be a co, it'd be a good compromise for Mr. Little John and him and us because we wouldn't have to spend no money to buy the property.
Acquire the right-of-way.
Right.
Well, the only thing, and like I say, it would be good, but if we had to go and acquire that right-of-way, then we could really do what we need to do. Versus right now, just like you're saying, have to come back and maintain and all this kinda stuff.
That makes it a more of the most desirable option for us, but he still, uh, did not agree to the terms that we were, that y'all allowed me to present him with.
But he was willing to go with the first proposal we gave offer.
Yeah, yes, sir, he, he, he counter offered, he just counter offered again.
Okay.
The same words, exactly where we were, he didn't move at all.
Well, may have just tried it further than do that, you know, I mean, we don't want to, but maybe on the option we have.
Keep working with him.
What do y'all think about the three-foot thing, does that sound like something, no?
I would, I would be agreeable with it.
I think.
I'm gonna start with it again.
I think it'll be okay.
Right back up in spring, isn't it?
I think it'd be okay as long as we got that.
You think you could do it once a year maybe and keep doing it?
Once a year?
Been under, uh.
That's a lot of up, keep that in mind. And that's to graze a foot a month.
Well, they're not, it's supposed to be winter, they're not gonna grow at all.
Yeah, but you've got springtime coming up.
I guess, I don't know.
Yes, sir, would y'all, uh, let me know if you, what, what you, what you kinda think I should do next, and I'll be willing to reach back out to him or whatever y'all want me to do.
That'd be a good thing to start this, have your equipment on.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank you.
Brandon, we got one more thing, how are we coming to win, Clay?
Um, we're hoping to pay very soon, and, uh, we, once we get the, the payment down and the, uh, the stocking and everything, it's kinda, gonna be kinda, uh, pretty well wrapped up except for the grassing, and, uh, we've got some washing going on out there. And, uh, when I, last time I was out there, there was not a whole lot of grass, so we just gotta stay after that grass, and if you, you want a little bit of rainfall there so that your seed is gonna germinate and the grass is gonna establish itself, but we've been kinda hitting some very heavy rainfall, and so then your seed ends up in the bottom of the ditch and then on down to the creek. And so, uh, we have been, uh, very fortuitous with our, uh, our grassing so far, so we're gonna have to continue to do that, and it's kind of a process on most jobs on getting the grass, um, established. That, that project is a little more important because of the slopes and the grave that's out there. It's not on many other places in Ware County with the amount of fall that we have coming down that hill. So, then your, your, um, your runoff is able to get some velocity behind it, it makes it a little harder.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. I'm Brandon. Any more? Okay, I hear a motion, adjourned.
So moved, Chair.
Hello. Mr. Burson and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.